You are watching Access to Fort County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the July 5th meeting of Michigan City Town and Council. You can get more information for this meeting by going to www accessesalafortcounty.org.
Hi, good evening. Today is July 5th in the first council meeting for July. Today, we've lost a public figure that was a mainstay here in Michigan City, Thomas Fetter. He was our city clerk for thirty-two years. And I just want us to keep his extended family in our prayers and all his friends and family. Because he played a significant role here in Michigan City, him and his family. And so when we do the after the pledge of allegiance, we'll have a moment of silence. And you know, just keep, like I said, keep him in your thoughts and prayers, his family. And please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Nile, before the roll call, I know Councilman Paul Privilinski, Councilman Gene Simmons, and Council Michael Mack won't be here on this evening. And Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick will be a little late, so we'll add him in as he gets here and acknowledge that he's present. Ms. Nile on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Mack. Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Presovolinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Presovolinsky. Mr. Simmons. Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have five present and four absent.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick is here now. Maybe we should have done like Gary and counseled our meeting because of the heat today.
All right.
Anyway. Yes. All right, we move on to the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Privilinski and a second by Councilman Bryant Dabney. Ms. Nile on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presovolinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nile. Any reports to standing committees? Yes, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to bring everyone up today in regards to the Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. With the help of amending the bylaws for the commission, with Attorney Harris Law Firm, we were able to establish and the commission did approve the new bylaws for now known as the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. With one issue remaining, and that is that the minority health partners remove themselves as being a partnership with the social status. So the commission is going to have to decide to amend the, well, we'll have to amend the ordinance to remove and possibly replace that entity.
Just a quick question, can we, instead of identifying specific organizations, can we put them in buckets like a healthcare organization or something like that?
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you. Any questions for Tracy on her, on her report? All right, thank you. Any other reports to standing committees? All right, Finance Committee. Councilman Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Michigan City Riverboat and Boye Claims Docket for July 5th, 2022. Riverboat, fifteen thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars. Riverboat EFT zero dollars. Boyd Development zero dollars. Total claims fifteen thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars, which is accounts payable to Clark Quinn, Moses Scott, and Graham LLP. I would like.
And that's for the, that's the attorneys for the Espionage Act, right?
That is correct.
Thank you. So with the claims docket being presented by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, again, it's for Fund 2042, fifteen thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars for total claims of fifteen thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Don Privilinski and a second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Mr. Don Presovolinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
All right, are there any reports of special or select committees? Special or select? All right, tonight we are going to have a presentation this evening. I'm going to ask Chief Dion Campbell to come up and he's going to talk to us and also have a presentation to the council and to the public this evening.
Good evening, Council. I hope everyone is doing well. Let me open up by saying God bless you. I'd like to start off by commending our officers. We had a tremendous weekend. The parade went all flawless and without incident. And we were really proud of our community, really proud of our officers. Also, last night at the fireworks, we had no incidents at all and it went all smoothly. And everyone had a wonderful time and it was just one of the better events that we've had in years. I'd also like to commend Corporal Nick Krause and Corporal Kelly Kennedy. They put together a warrant suite for us that netted twenty-nine arrests and we're very proud of that. Public safety is a very important issue and tonight we have brought with us a team from Atlanta that is going to talk about a technology which we believe can reduce crime up to twenty-five percent in our city immediately and in the future. They came all the way from Atlanta and we want to introduce the team. They represent the Flock system. So at this time, I'd like to call up Erica Bouvoir from the Flock system. Come on up. If you would, give her a hand and just thank them for coming all the way from Atlanta. She's accompanied by Josh.
Why hello, everyone. It is an absolute pleasure to be here. I am Erica Bouvoir. And first and foremost, I can't wait to go to the restaurant that's across the way. It looks very inviting. So thank you for having us. My teammate is Josh Thomas. And we would love to help keep your community safe here in Michigan City. We'll start our presentation. Oh, he's gonna, okay. I got the pleasure to meet some of you all at the ARPA committee meeting last, I think it was last week. So we're here back to give the presentation to everyone else. And I, I also want to put out here that I'm actually prior law enforcement. I was a police officer for fifteen years and I did a lot of community engagement, a lot of patrol, night, day. So when I found this system myself and I saw this company, I thought to myself, wow, I wish I had this to tell my community. Because I was, I was a police officer in Austin. So I'm really thankful and I hope that you all can see the value in this particular system. And we will get started shortly. How is everyone doing out here? We're good? Okay. I think it's coming up now.
All right, there we go.
All right, so, so here, why Flock Safety? Going, there's a couple of things that we know to be true. And that is that there is a nationwide staffing shortage for police professionals currently and violent crime is on the rise. As well as now we need trust more now than ever when it comes to collaborating with police professionals. This is a chart that I got off of the Uniform Crime Report in reference to crimes cleared opposed to reporting when it comes to Michigan City. As you can see, there is a bit of a gap between what is cleared and what is reported and we want to help fill that gap. Fifteen percent of the clearance rate for property crime right now, it's really difficult to create different investigative leads when it comes to property crime because we need data. We need something to start with. And then there's fifty percent clearance rate when it comes to violent crimes and we've saw that our, our system helps with these particular pieces of information. Now, how does the tech work? When you get Flock, it is vehicle details and license plate only. We're talking about indiscriminate, real-time investigative leads. Those license plates are the first key factors in starting a case, especially when we're talking about property crime or we're talking about any type of crime. There's no people or facial recognition that is attached to our system. Now, we know that maybe in the past, there was other systems that had facial recognition. Our system does not have that. There's also no traffic enforcement. This is how it looks. So these are the cameras on the solar panels, but we can also affix the, the cameras on that there's poles that are already existing in the community. We can put them on there as well. Just want to take time to reiterate what our tech is and what it is not. It is license plate recognition. We're taking photos of license plates. We are taking photos of that vehicle. We're gathering objective evidence and we are alerting police of wanted vehicles. Now, how that works is there is a national crime database that a lot of that information, when it comes to high priority crimes or missing persons, there's a national database that those officers can place those license plates in. So for instance, when I was a police officer and there was a missing elderly case and we knew what the license plate was, we can put that information in the system. So if someone comes in contact with that vehicle, we know that that individual was missing and then we can help relocate that person to their families. We adhere to all the state laws and we have limited data storage, which means we store the data for thirty days in the system. And after thirty days, it is hard deleted. There's, on a rolling basis as well. So every thirty days, those agencies have to go in that system and utilize that information or it is deleted. Now, what our tech isn't, it is not, again, facial recognition. It is not tied to personal identification information and it is not used for traffic enforcement. Our data is not sold to third-party vendors, which means tow truck companies, immigration, things like that. We do not sell the data. Josh, if you want to jump in for Raven?
Thanks, Erica. Thank you, Madam President and Council. Appreciate you all inviting us down here. So this is another piece of our technology that we leverage. This is an audio detection device. So we built this specifically to recognize the frequency of a gunshot. So when you hear a gunshot, we want to be able to distinguish that from other loud audible sounds like a car backfiring or fireworks we just heard right this week. And so this device will actually use machine learning on the, on the actual device to recognize the specific frequency of a gunshot. And by doing that, we can then leverage those other cameras that Erica was just describing to get the suspect license plates that are in the area. So you go instantly from a shot fired to a suspect license plate so that you can very, very quickly, hopefully find the suspect involved in that incident. Right? Could have been really helpful in a lot of situations that we've all heard a lot about very recently, which just terrible, terrible news. But the reason this technology is really powerful is because it's not isolated. It's not its own piece of technology on, on, on an island. It works in conjunction with the license plate readers and that's the power of all this technology. Gunshot to license plate gives real evidence to police. Without that, it can be really, really difficult for law enforcement to go solve crime because they don't have evidence. Think about how many times we have all seen or heard about or personally been affected by crime. And if you can't give law enforcement the specific details that they need to go out and go track a lead, it can be really, really hard to know, okay, there was a blue car or I saw a person wearing a red shirt. That, that's, those descriptors don't often give the evidence to different fleets. But when you compare gunshot to license plate, you can instantly get a piece of evidence and that lead can help law enforcement solve crime.
And we think that aspect is a beautiful marriage. Sometimes we show up on calls and we know that there are shots fired and when when we get to the location, no one has seen anything. This takes that aspect totally out of the dimension. And when we get, it's, to me, it's incredible to be able to have shots fired, which is one of the issues that we deal with in our city and then that be able to have cameras that capture license plates that are leaving out of the areas. Those, those type of details will help us to solve crimes in a greater manner than we have ever been able to do.
And the powerful thing about that is, again, it's listening only for those, the frequency of gunshot. So it is not listening for voices of humans. In fact, it can't identify that. We send alerts to law enforcement only when it recognizes that sound of a gunshot. So you can't like flip on a switch and listen to a live conversation of anybody. There is no recognition of human voices. And again, we're only storing very short audio clips. These are three to five second audio clips of that gunshot. And then giving that as a piece of evidence paired with the license plates to law enforcement. Again, not detecting people, not tied to any person identifiable information. So we don't connect to like DMV records. We don't know who anybody has registered drivers of cars. We're not storing this for an indefinite period of time. We are storing these for short pieces of time to give law enforcement what they need to go solve crime. Here, I'll hand it back to you, Erica.
So how can we prevent and eliminate crime with Flock Safety? Well, first off, it's proactive. We get real-time alerts when it comes to stolen, wanted vehicles, missing persons vehicles. It's investigative. So as clearance rates increase, crime rates decrease. As someone that has law enforcement experience, what I learned being in a community is it's actually a small percentage of individuals that are doing these crimes on a regular basis. So if we are able to isolate those incidents and solve those crimes, you'll start seeing that the crime rates decrease in communities. As well as Flock is, it acts as a deterrent. So when you start doing media around it, a lot of people know and have seen some of the success stories that came out of Flock. And more than likely, people may not want to do those type of crimes here in this community. When it comes to mitigating risks now, we've had conversations with a lot of cities and there are some common concerns that we found. A lot of conversations around Big Brother. Is this Big Brother? Is this some sort of secret surveillance? When it comes to Big Brother, we want to make sure that people know that the data is only stored for thirty days. We don't sell it. And it's not used for traffic enforcement. We want to make sure that we reiterate that. Now, there's also conversations around transparency. Our Flock Safety Public Safety System has a transparency portal. Now, this portal, and I'll go into it a little, a little later, it separates us from other systems because it is a forward-facing community portal where the community can look up any auditable information. There's also conversations around cameras taking pictures of my face, constant surveillance. This is a camera system that takes pictures of license plates and the vehicles and that's it. There's no facial recognition. There isn't any searchable data when it comes to names or anything like that when it comes to this particular system. And then lastly, certain communities will be targeted more than others. We encourage transparency when it comes to our system. We encourage utilizing the transparency portal. We also want to have community conversations around placement, making sure that everyone is comfortable when it comes to our systems and our cameras and communities. This is a transparency portal and what it looks like. You can put a lot of customizable information on there such as ALPR policies, pursuit policies, any policies that would be forward-facing that people can see what is that we're going to do if we're utilizing, we get some sort of hit on our cameras. As well as putting the audit information can be downloadable and placed on our portal as well. And that same privacy goes with the Raven as well. These are, we're saving short five-second audio clips. We are collecting the data that Josh was talking about, which is gunshots. It's not voice recognition and the data retention is similar, which, which it is thirty days. The data is also owned by the city and or agency. And we don't know, we don't have access to it from a Flock organization perspective. This is just reiterating because we want to make it clear. No facial recognition, no personal information, not connected to any registration, not used for traffic enforcement. And you have to have a search region, reason when you are in the system. You can't just go in there and say, I want to look up this vehicle. You have to have a reason and that reason then creates an audit trail. Okay. It actually solves and prevents crimes as well. So some of the success stories out of Indiana, we have Clarksville, six months recovered, thirty-five stolen vehicles, five felony arrests, twenty-nine drug-related arrests. In Gary, there was a hundred and forty-six cases cleared. In Plainfield, a father stepped away from his vehicle with a child in a car. Someone jumped in the car with a child in it. They were able to leverage Flock Safety cameras and the child got reunited with their parent. And then most recently, I put on here the July 2nd. Missing seven-year-old child was found riding on the back of a motorcycle with a registered sex offender. And we were able to leverage the Flock Safety cameras to retrieve that child and reunite them back with their family. This is our overview when it comes to Indiana. There's approximately a hundred law enforcement agencies across the state that are utilizing our system. There's close to one thousand and fifty cameras across the agencies. And of course, by the last slide, there are success stories already happening in Indiana. Now, I want to bring up this particular story because it shows the concept of human error. There was a man assaulted with a handgun, robbed of his wallet. There was eyewitness there who said that it was blackmail in a brown truck. We were able to, in Memphis, leverage the Flock Safety System and found the only brown truck in the area using that system. But what we found out is that it was not a blackmail in the brown truck. And if we only had the eyewitness information, then that's what the police officers would have went off of opposed to the objective information, which is that this brown truck was driven by someone else. And we were able to use our Flock Safety System to actually get the right person that committed the crime. This is just a case study out of San Marino. After twelve months of utilizing the Flock Safety System, we have seventy percent decrease in residential burglaries, nineteen percent decrease in high priority crimes. And then there was a thirty-six percent increase in expansion in the cameras. So the return on investment obviously is the reduction of crime as you see that the system already is working in Indiana and solving a lot of crimes. Increase police trust. We want to make sure that the community knows the ins and outs when it comes to this particular system. We also want to increase community buy-in and we're here to answer those questions, be a part of community events because we want folks to know that it's not about dropping off a product and going on about our business. But once we're here, we're a part of that community as well.
And just so everyone knows, we plan on doing a community rollout where we're going to do three or four community meetings where we're going to talk about, about the Flock system, give the same presentation that you're seeing today. And I'm very, very confident that the community wants this type of technology. It will be statistically based. We'll look at last year's crime statistics, see where the violent crimes was, the shots fired. Look at the neighborhoods where we had the violent crime. And this would absolutely work for us. For us, this would be a force multiplier. Michigan City Police Department, like every department in our nation, is facing two top challenges. And that is recruitment and retention. And just like every entity in our country, the airline industry, stores, fast food restaurants, all of them are dealing with personnel issues. This would be a force multiplier for us and can dramatically help to reduce crime. I really think this is a no-brainer, but I just wanted to emphasize, we do plan on getting community buy-in, hosting some meetings, being very transparent about this technology. And I can even foresee businesses in our community saying, hey, we want to assist with this. Myers and Walmart, they would step in and say, hey, we'll purchase one of these and link it to your system. And I think that this is very, very attractive.
And that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what I'll do, I wanted to, first we'll allow the council, but I wanted to see if, if the council will be okay with suspending the rules to allow public comment upfront, just in case there are some comments that, because I did speak with them and they were open to answering questions. Is there anyone opposed to public comment upfront after we?
No, I'm not opposed, but we just keep it to three minutes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
We're just, yes, yes, definitely. All right. Any, any questions from the council?
Yeah, Madam President, I have, I have a couple. What is the, well, I guess there's a hundred other, just in the state of Indiana, there's a hundred other. Where do they, oh, there you are. Okay. There's a hundred other police departments that are using this in this state. Okay.
Okay. Before, yes, and, and before, yeah, because it's being recorded.
Sorry.
And before we go through that, can you just mention all the surrounding areas that, because that, I think that's important that along our lake shore, all the way down?
All of the agencies along the lake shore have this and we're the missing link. We have literally solved a crime using La Porte County's flock system. We tapped into their resources and it allowed us to solve a major crime here. And we're the missing link in our region. So thank you for bringing that up, Madam President.
All right. I'll let you.
Okay, so La Porte County has it?
Yes.
Okay. How, what is the cost?
Oh, one, one camera is twenty-five hundred dollars per year.
Okay, in one audio?
Oh, sorry. And we charge per square mile for the audio detection. So we, we put up a bunch of sensors around the city. And we don't charge you based on the number of devices. It's based on the number of square miles that you utilize. What are we, what? Twenty-two hundred, twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars for one square mile.
Okay, and how long have you, your company been in business?
Five years.
So I take it Chesterton has it, Valpo has it, Porter County has it?
Correct.
Well, yeah, if we're saying we're the missing link along the lake shore, then that tells me we're the only city that, that doesn't have it.
Yeah, this is our other colleague, Sam from, he lives in Indiana.
I'm not, I just want to make sure that Michigan City is the only one.
Yeah, great question. So the question was, what surrounding communities have it? So I'm the Indiana rep there from, or from Atlanta. I cover all of Indiana for us. So just to name a few off the top of the head, Gary PD, who we highlighted, has made a couple hundred arrests since working with us in early November. Porter County has a substantial emphasis with us up here in the region specifically and all the way coming from Indianapolis. Like I said, I believe we have fifty-five agencies north of Indianapolis here. If you have any specific questions on, so you mentioned a couple there.
Yeah, I mentioned if we're the missing link along the lake shore, I'm also looking at, you know, you have Porter, you have Portage, you have Chesterton, you have Valparaiso. You know, do all those, do they all have?
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, sorry, Sam Hay.
Okay, Sam. So to answer the question, do all those communities have it?
Yeah, specifically those communities that we're referring to are either under an MOU with us or they do have cameras so far with us, with the exception of Chesterton that you mentioned. So the value of the flock safety system, if I could just add this in to reiterate what the chief and my team here has been referring to is being a force multiplier, being a force multiplier is not just necessarily having the cameras in your own community by flock. So even think about somewhere like Marion County up in Michigan, right? So crime travels, most of the time your crime's not necessarily even originating in your own community if you look at statistics. So the value of that, just to use the example we talked about earlier in Evansville, that gentleman that was basically essentially kidnapped, that seven-year-old child was headed back to Tennessee. So using the cameras between Indiana and the other agencies that utilize it, we talk about a force multiplier. Obviously, when we talk about size and being the gap up here in this, in this region, is Michigan City is really a stronghold for a lot of commerce to come through and a really great place for a lot of Indiana, Illinois and Michigan communities to come in the summer. And we see this as a strategic place to continue to drive down crime. So we talk about the goal of reducing crime by twenty-five percent across the country as a company. But here tangibly in Indiana, with the statistics that we've seen and we can share them with you as well after this, but having every agency from a two to three officer or a sworn officer community all the way to Indianapolis or Gary to a Michigan City, it's going to take every agency working together to try to achieve that twenty-five percent goal. So that's what we're referring to. And we talk about this being a stronghold and a strategic partner for. So sorry, that's probably longer than my three minutes, but I wanted to add that in.
That's fine. And then I know getting back to the young lady, you said that when there's a, there's a gunfire goes off and is detected, that there's an alert sent to the police department? How does that work?
So this is Josh speaking, sorry. In, in real time, as, as the gunshot happens, our audio sensors will hear that gunfire and send a text message alert. Or if you have the browser open in the car, so and then the, the car that have the laptops, it's called the MDT. On that, we can send a real-time alert inside the vehicle or to a cell phone. It says shot fired at this location. It'll drop a pin on the map and it'll show you the license plates that are in the area at that exact same time.
And that's every police officer that's worked in that ship?
Whoever's login system, correct. Which could be every, every, every patrol officer, detective or whoever the chief wants to set up to, to do that. Yes.
Just to go along, just to piggyback off that, let me create a scenario. Let's say there's a robbery taking place. You hear glass breaking. How does the technology work with something like that?
Yeah. So right in that moment, the audio sensors in that area will send an alert to the officers in the area that says there was glass broken at this specific location. The cameras that are there will also be identified and show the suspect license plates of those cars that are in that exact area at that time.
So just all cars though that are in the area?
Correct, at that exact specific place. That's right. And so what the detective can do now is they can go in the system and if an eyewitness saw anything, it took off in a silver Toyota, they can go into our system and type in literally silver Toyota and then find the license plate.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, yes, I'm down here.
Yes, you know, what we saw in the earlier presentation, I think what's missing here is that people see like how immediate this alert system goes. So if there's somebody just driving down twelve, entering Michigan City and the flock system detects a wanted license plate, immediately the police are notified. It's like real time and there's maps and there's, then they start triangulating where this person is going. So like, that's not really emphasized on this presentation, but it's like real time and it right away. And then the cooperation between the agencies are what's really, I think, important.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Councilman Jim.
If you could elaborate for everyone that's here and that's on Zoom or online. When we keep saying the brown truck, can you explain in more detail how the flock system can categorize not just the brown truck, but multiple brown trucks to narrow it down to that specific vehicle?
Yeah. So our, thank you for the question, Councilman. So our technology takes a picture of the back of a car. And we use what's called machine learning. I described that a little bit earlier to decode what's in the frame of that picture. Now, we're only looking at cars. So what we can do from that is we can get from the back of the car, the type of the car, the color of the car, the license plate of the car, any sort of distinguishing marks like, does it have a bumper sticker or a roof rack or aftermarket wheels? From that, you can use our system like an Amazon search and you can filter down to the results you're looking for. So if you know it's a brown car in this one area, brown is a more unique color of a vehicle. You can find the only brown car in that area. Now, if there's three brown cars, you maybe have another piece of information or something from another CCTV camera nearby that said, oh, it had a roof rack. In our system, you can narrow it down to the brown car with a roof rack. That's how you get the license plate that the law enforcement can then go use to go get their piece of evidence.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Councilman, it's Patrick.
Yes, I thank you guys for traveling so far to present this as, I think you have some great information that you shared with us. So I only had a couple of questions. So for a city our size, how many cameras would you think we need? Or is it just specific to certain areas? Like are they, are they mobile? Or you just pick an area, leave them there and then you need additional cameras, you move them around? Or how does that work?
Yeah. So great question. So the first thing I would tell you is every city is different. We typically recommend putting them at the ingress and egress points of the city. So as people are coming in or leaving town, we want to make sure that we are able to identify those specific places. The second layer we look at is typically hotspot locations. We do that with, as the chief mentioned earlier, what's historical crime trends? Where do you see gunshots happening? Where's the most violent crime happening? And these are, to answer your second question, they are typically in fixed locations. So we can both either install our own polls as my colleague, Ms. Bouvar, mentioned, or put them on city polls. But yeah, they're typically put in fixed locations around town. And it really just depends on the size, like where you want to.
Right. And Councilman, I think that's the beauty of this system is that we can have a community conversation about these things. And it's customizable. So we, you know, like I said at the beginning, we could look at the statistics, our hotspots, where we need them the most, and then we can build a security system that could make, that could significantly decrease crime in the areas that we want it to be decreased.
Okay, thank you. So a nice question. With the square mile that the
Yeah, the audio detection device?
Audio detection device. So are those more like targeted as well, since it's a square mile? Because I don't know, I think we're, I don't know, twenty miles or some, I don't know. Is it just, yeah. So is it just to go to specific areas or should we strategically put those in different areas as well? So we have maximum coverage for detection in those situations?
Well, if you want to put it over twenty square miles, we'd be happy with that too. But I'm sure, but no, but the, the reality is we'll, we'll, we'll start with the one square mile with the chief's discretion and then see how that works. Like we anticipate it being very successful that for that square mile. But yes, to your question, it really does. We would want, we would want them in more places to help identify those signatures in more places. But every city is a little bit different. And so Michigan City, like, that's why we can't say the exact number of sensors that we're going to put out because of trees and buildings and like, audio can be very different in different places. And so we have to put enough of those sensors up to be able to identify the gunshot correctly. So that's what we do by square mile, but we'll, we'll start with one square mile and then proceed from there.
Okay, so I got just a couple more questions. So the, the part that takes the picture, is this similar to like what the, like the state tollways use where it just takes a shot of the back and then if you don't pay, they just send you a bill sort of?
It is similar technology in the sense that, yes, those are both taking pictures of the back of cars. That is a little bit different. So what they're doing is they're using, it, it gets a little wonky, but they use technology that's just called optical character recognition. It's OCR. And so they're identifying just the characters and numbers on the back of a license plate and they're automatically sending out tickets in the mail. Right? So they are connected to DMV records and so they're sending that automatically to whoever the registered driver is. We're not connected to the DMV. So we don't do anything with traffic violations or speeding or anything like that. The other difference is that we take a picture of the entire back of the car so we can make out in real time, the color of the car and all those other things we talked about, the distinguishing marks. Those other toll cameras, they don't do that. So they're, they're only looking for the license plate itself.
Okay. So and I think this is the last question. So because your, the fee was what? Twenty-five hundred a year for the, the camera system? Are those, will it maintain, you'll maintain ownership of them? So if, if say we don't pay for a year, you guys come and pick them up. Also, what if they're damaged or inoperable at some point? Who covers that part?
Yeah. So we have a full-time maintenance team that's local here in Indiana. So they'll be the ones that install it. They'll be the ones that maintain it. These are all cell-powered. So they're sending up to the cloud via cell. And yes, our team will go out there and make sure that they're maintained.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right, Councilman Dabney. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is just real quick. I was going to ask or talk about how they have the team that's here in Indiana that would be able to service us. We had people from Atlanta and they had done the presentation, but there are service team would be here in Indiana if we need a service on this system.
Correct. Thank you. I do have one question. I, I think most of my questions have been answered. We, we have trains that go through. Does it just block out everything else's white noise, like trains? Yes.
Correct. Yeah. So it, it's, you're exactly right. It is not identifying the sound of anything besides gunshots.
Okay, and the glass breaking?
Correct. So step one is the gunshots. Step two will be glass breaking, person screaming. But we're, we don't have that live yet. We only have the audio detection for gunshots live right now.
Okay.
We're still working on building out the algorithms to be better for the other ones.
Okay, awesome. All right. Well, what I'll do, I know that I, we've already said that we will allow public comment if there are a few that would like to ask questions. So Mr. Kalavich, come on up. And, and we keep it to three minutes and that way we can let you all finish up after public comment. All right.
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. As far as I'm concerned, there ought to be a flock camera on every corner in Michigan City. As far as the invasion of privacy, we need to start getting to more people's privates. If there were years ago, if there would have been a, a flock camera at Grayson Holiday, we would have known who took Millie Jenkins from our mitts. This, you know, we, we should, we shouldn't, we shouldn't call these flock cameras. We ought to call them Millie cameras. My only question for our friends from Atlanta is how soon can they deliver? Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Yes, Mr. McCormick.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Technology is not the problem. Technology won't corrupt, but those individuals that run technology can. We had the internet, child porn, something like this that was happening in the county. We have to be careful on this. I'm all for giving them whatever they want. But at the same time, this president, we want something in return. We need to get body count footage if we want them as citizens. It's been the same old same. We keep giving to the police, but we don't get nothing back. You might be okay with it, Don. I'm not okay with it. A lot of people in our neighborhood is not okay with it. A lot of us have problems with bad police officers. Our incidents where police are lied on too. We need to start getting that body cam footage out. And we need to, we need to pay attention to what's really going on. We heard all the pros. We didn't hear nothing about the cons. I'm pretty sure there are some. But be careful what you're doing. Pay attention. Thank you.
Yeah, yes. If you have a question, I can repeat it if you want. I can hear you. Okay. Any, anyone else while he's, yes, come on up.
Thank you, Bruce Demeritchi, six nineteen Hobart. If I may, I had a couple of questions, if I could, a question I wanted to clarify. The, the city would own the data, but you folks would destroy it. Is that what I heard you say? I, I've been just curious mechanically, how does that work? Did you hold the data? Like, go ahead, please. Please, thank you.
Yeah. So thanks for the question. So it's all, this is a setting you can do in Amazon Web Services Government Cloud. So the government cloud is the most secure cloud server that is available. We are only the stewards of that. Yes, you're right. The city owns the data and is a setting that we have set up to automatically delete every thirty days on a rolling basis.
Well, that's great. Do you mind, do you mind if I put you on the spot? One more question?
Let's go.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I'd be real quick. Do you have a good record in terms of defense counsel attacking your system in defense of cases?
Yeah. So the question is basically like white hat, white hat hackers and people on our team. We have a team of ten security engineers full-time on our staff that are actively looking for bugs and they have bounty programs out that they're asking people to hack our systems if they can get into it. So far, the answer has been no. No one's been able to. But we have active training. In fact, we, we have to do training every single week as users because that's usually your most vulnerable place is users phishing scams and that sort of thing. We have to do training every single week and our security engineers set it up.
And I appreciate that. You know, I've addressed the council a couple of times and, and the points about the thirty-day retention and, and who owns the data addresses some of the questions I have. I, I do think it makes sense for the city council, if they adopt this, to make sure that the city council had, or the city has a policy relating to the data that protects the city in case the city's conduct is called into question on the data. So, so thank you. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Fly.
God bless everybody. God, Horizons. I got a couple of questions.
State your name and address.
I got a couple of questions for, for the people down there.
Please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Fly.
Oh, James Dockery from Two Thick Pin on Kenafly. Kenafly, two eleven East Fulton Street, Michigan City, Indiana, four six three six zero. I'm a joyful guy, man. You gotta love it. I just got a couple of questions for y'all down there. I want to ask you first off. I did hear Mr. McCormick mention the cons. I was like, dang, he's going to take my really good question. So eventually when I'm done, I would like you to tell us some of the cons, some of the things that's been wrong with that. Some things that I know it has because ain't nothing perfect in life, you know, ain't no one, not nothing a hundred percent. So if you can just think to yourself while I'm speaking of some things that you might know that's, that's been problematic. After that, I also want to say that with the, with this new system, I'm not really want to speak. with this, uh, new system, I'm not really want to speak about the statistics of it or the status quo of it. But I want to more or less think of the police department, which I have grown a great relationship with lately. And we trying to bridge a good, good gap slowly but surely, you know. But is this another form of being able to racial profile? You know, to a certain degree, you know, uh, I'm sure, you know, it says can ping, you know, lights, play colored dot, 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 dot. But you know, uh, people with their own eyes can ping a black and a white person face to face and mess with the black person, you know. Or the neighborhoods where the system is going around mostly and predominantly, as I heard Mr. Campbell, Campbell, uh, mentioned that it would be probably, pretty much targeted in a troubled neighborhoods or neighborhoods of high problematics, you know. So we gotta make sure that we ain't just instrumenting these situations and these tools just to be, um, faced at certain cultures or certain neighborhoods, you know, it got to be just as heavy in the white people's neighborhood and suburbs too. And we can't be like, to a certain degree, you know, like, uh, Mr. McCormick mentioned one time, you know, um, officers are human. They got people they like, they dislike, and they ain't got nothing to do with no cameras, no, no logistics that you got going on. You know, and, um, so you know, it's a, it's a thin line. Make sure you don't get the racial profiling involved. Also a thin line to make sure what's the cons to this? What's, what, what has been the problems with this? Cause other than that, the way y'all presented it, I'm like, shit, I'm glad I ain't no criminal no more. You know, cause I ought to be scared, you know? So that's all I'm asked.
Thank you, Mr. Fly.
And to ans- answer, Mr. Fly's, I've, the technology is indiscriminate. And we are profiling. We're profiling crime. When we look at the statistics, these belong in our high crime areas. If that just so happens to be the black community, are we saying that just because it's the black community, we're going to allow crime to happen there? I think not. So what we're doing is looking at Michigan City and where the crime is located and it is, makes common sense to put this technology where you have your high crime areas, where you have your shots fired, so forth and so on. Because those people in that community deserve quality policing as well.
I agree.
You don't need to put a flock camera system necessarily in, uh, an area where there is lower crime. Now, if crime increases, you put it there, whether that's white, black, Hispanic, whatever, it doesn't make any difference. We are targeting crime and crime only.
Just to follow up on your question and then sir, if you can also make yourself to the mic to bottom cons. Uh, Mr. Campbell, now I got you with fighting the crimes and you want the crime area. Man, I listen, bro, I live in the area. It's fucked up. I mean messed up.
Thank you.
I want to get out. I'm out of here, man. But good job, Mr. Campbell, man. I think that system got it going on, man. I really do, man. I'm just scared that it'd be more problems for the people of color because, you know, they already kind of feel like, you know, they be targeted every time they driving around that even when they ain't doing trouble, you know.
Our, our administration or our officers, we don't, that's not in our DNA. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. But this technology is indiscriminate. It does not go after any type of facial recognition. It simply targets, uh, vehicles that are in the area where you get shots fired or vehicles that are, are entering or exiting our city. And that's basically it.
Go and get it, Mr. Campbell. Y'all go and prove that thing.
Thank you. Yes. So, uh, yes, Mr., um, this.
So a question that just came up to me and this is from, uh, I guess from a professional perspective as a death investigator with the, the thirty-day retention. And then it being deleted. Now, is it being deleted from your database or from the database that the city has access to?
It's a good question. It's deleted from the cloud after thirty days. So if it's needed as a piece of evidence, police can download it and save it in their normal evidence management system. How they would save all their other evidence.
Okay, so. It has, it, everything can be held indefinitely.
Correct. You can download it and save it as evidence if you're using it for an active case.
In order to, and you said in order to do that, you have to create a search parameter or something to.
Yeah, you just, so when you search for a car in our system, you'll see the cars. There's a button you can download that and save it into your evidence management system.
Yep. And one of the things we talked about, um, there has to be a policy in place within the department. So if something is downloaded or there's an active case, you have to have those policies and procedures or those protocols put in place that they have to follow.
What I'm thinking, the, the perspective I'm coming from it from as a death investigator, you know, sometimes not to be gruesome, you know, you may not find a deceased body for
A while.
of more than thirty days. And if it's something that was criminal in nature or violent and say, from my perspective saying, okay, this person has been deceased for forty days. And is it possible to go back and say, okay, well, forty days ago, these are the cars that were in and out of this area to kind of pinpoint maybe something that could be, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in our system, that is not possible unless you change that thirty-day retention period. The only way that our company will change that thirty-day retention period is if a city either institutes a new ordinance that says it needs to be retained for longer or if the state mandates it. So there are some states that have passed laws that said it has to be retained for a year. We'll save it for a year to follow the law.
Yeah. And we asked, we add, that question was asked previously too, that if we want to extend the parameters to start with, with the trial or whatever, we, we could do that locally. It doesn't have to be thirty days. That's just the standard.
You, your city would have to pass some sort of an ordinance saying that. That's right.
Yes.
There's also like an audit trail. So anybody searching the system for any reason has to have a reason and it's audited. You can't just go in there and poke around, see what you can find.
And that, and that is not deleted, by the way, the audit trail is never deleted.
And, and the only thing, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Um, the only thing I would, um, sh- uh, share too though, is when I think of that example, um, if someone's come up, comes up missing and somebody reports it, we can almost from that location, within that thirty days, even if you find the person forty-five days later, you can technically, someone can say the last person they saw him at the gas station. You can look at those plates and do all that within that and save that for a future investigation. So, yeah, yes, Councilman Dabney, and then we'll wrap up.
Yeah. Real quick, I wish I could have answered before, uh, Mr. Fly left because he recalls the last time, last council, we went through this, when this was presented to us for license plate readers. Um, and the, the, the system was supposed to work where it would be attached to the front of cars. And the, the big catch or the big problem with, with that is that they were saying, well, you would just drive around in certain neighborhoods and target certain neighborhoods. And as a matter of fact, I think the council unanimously voted that down because of that concern. But when you're talking about with, with these, these could be spread all over the city, as you said, that entrance and exit to the city. Everywhere, highway twelve, ninety-four, twenty, uh, places like that, up and down Franklin, up and down the boulevard and things of that sort. So they're all over the city. And you really take that out, but as the, the chief said, you are going where the crime areas are. Um, if that happens to be in black neighborhoods, white neighborhoods, that's where, you know, some of these, uh, cameras and that, that Raven uh, system that we're talking about would be placed. And, uh, but it would be put in different locations around the city. So. And yeah, we would, we would be able to, to handle that. And so I think that kind of takes away some of that, you know, that, that pressure or talking about, uh, the racial profiling, because that was a big deal that they would be on the front of cars that would be riding through neighborhoods, almost like a tow truck or something like that. Um, and like I said, the council unanimously voted it down the last time. So uh, obviously I've been through these presentations. This is the fourth one for me and I'm in favor of this.
All right. Thank you. Oh, yes.
Yes, it was about the, um, trial period. So we do have an opportunity to do a sixty-day trial. And that is something that I hope that the, um, police department and the chief will be able to, um, implement in the process and that will also be able to give us some data to come back when he's ready to do those, uh, community, um, awareness in regards to what the flock system does. Once that's implemented, then we'll be able to move forward and actually purchase the actual equipment that we're gonna need.
I have one last question. I forgot. How does weather affect, does weather affect or impacted the system? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, good question. So there, uh, there's your typically solar powered. Um, but we can, uh, what we do is we call it winterization. So we can make it with enough battery packs, solar that it'll last throughout winter. So, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you again.
We really, really appreciate it. I think that we're going to find that most of our community is going to be like Mr. Kavulchik. And they're, they're going to be, let's already get this done. If you would, uh, let's give them a hand clap. We're coming always.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Appreciate you taking our questions. All right, um, moving back to the, the agenda. Did, did you have a question about the, okay. Uh, moving back to the agenda, um, any additional, um, reports from city officers or departments?
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, uh, all members. Doug Legault, Michigan City Fire Chief. I would like to commend, give a big thank you and say how proud I am of the firefighters and lifeguards for the job, brave job that they are doing. As you probably all know from reading the paper, there were nine people saved over just this weekend. Seven of them, the lifeguards pulled out from a critical drowning situation. Uh, number eight was two bystanders pulled this individual out and the ninth was our firefighter, uh, Kyle Gish from our dive team. So, um, you know, basically because of these nine people being saved, their families are now enjoying family members instead of basically scheduling a funeral. So big thank you to all of them. Just let them know how proud I am of them. Um, also the firefighters have been busy. There's been thirteen confirmed structure fires with property and content loss for the month of May and June. So they've been, uh, that's a pretty big number for two months. Um, and, uh, last thing, uh, Councilman Don Preswellinsky asked me to get some information. I'm doing the best I can. I do have some, but it's not pinpoint information, but it's really close. I'm working with the EMS director, assistant director, uh, and he's helping me out with this. Uh, Councilman Preswellinsky wanted me to look up overdoses for Michigan City. So with our software and, and the way we do our reports, it's hard to, for me, pinpoint Michigan City. But EMS assistant director came up with a hundred and forty-seven overdoses from year to date for La Porte County. That's for the whole county. He overviewed those really quickly and he came up with, he believes around seventy-six for Michigan City area. So that's from year to date. So for the first six months of the year, you're looking at seventy-six. We're trying to figure out how I can get you a, a real good number. And he's working on that with their provider as far as how they do their reports. So.
And chief, you know, I appreciate you coming this evening and, uh, giving us that information. And like I said, when we discussed this on the phone, I know that it's going to take time to put a report together. And be accurate, you know, but, yeah, but if the council could get it on a monthly basis, that would be greatly appreciated.
That's what I'm shooting for, monthly. But for right now, that's year to date is what he could give me.
Yeah, because with the seventy-six, like you just said.
Every, uh, just about every third day, I think.
Yeah. See, this, this is pertinent information that the council needs. You know, the whole, the administration needs. If we got a problem in the community, it's got to be addressed. And apparently with seventy-six overdoses, that seems to be a problem to me. So thank you. And the other thing, thank the fire department, all the lifeguards for the fantastic job they're doing.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a quick question. With the, uh, pinpointing the overdose, uh, from Michigan City, can't they just look at the addresses? Where the cases, where they responded to?
He's got to go through thousands of medical calls. So he's working on it, trust me. Um, and I told him if he just has to even give me that hundred and forty-seven, I can go through them possibly. You know, but he did, uh, that's what he used was the addresses. He just roughly went through them real quick for me.
Yeah. So I'm thinking if you catch up to where we are currently, then monthly it'll probably be easier.
Then, yeah, correct. Yep. That's what I told him also.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe a way to, to put some identifiers on them. So, so that data it can be used. That would be great too. All right. Thank you. Any additional reports from mayor, I mean, from the mayor or any other city officer? Righty. And, all right, uh, clerk Nyla, are there any petitions?
A petition was received in the clerk's office on June twenty-eighth from the concerned citizens of Eastport Community for resource and support.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody here from, from that created the petition? I did allow someone to speak the last time that would like to speak. All right. Thank you. Any communications?
Correspondence was received in clerk's office on June fourteenth from President regarding the ARPA workshop held on fourteenth and future workshop scheduled. Correspondence was received in clerk's office on the sixteenth from concerned citizens of the Eastport Neighborhood, Michigan City. Correspondence was received on the twenty-third from La Porte Superior Court Number Two regarding a summons. And correspondence was received in the clerk's office from Waldron Tate Bowen and Spandu regarding a tort claim notice.
Thank you, Clerk Nyla. Could you read the first resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only approving the change of use of appropriated funds in the twenty-twenty-two budget in the River Boat Fund for the Street Department. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preswellinsky and Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Any, any comments from the sponsor? Wait, wait.
Okay, uh, yeah, being a co-sponsor on this and Sean Smith is here, the, uh, street superintendent. And basically what it is, there's already, uh, money in the budget. And what we're doing is changing the appropriation from getting a, a, uh, street sweeper and a leaf back over to getting one asphalt patch recycler and six solar power radar speed limit signs. We installed at three city parks for forty-eight thousand dollars. And a five-year lease to purchase of a backhoe loader with the attachments, uh, which is with two hundred and fifty work hours per year, which is on a contract for approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that's what the resolution is for transferring the funds from the, uh, street sweeper and a leaf back to these three items. And one thing that I would like to say on the resolution, all, well, not on this resolution, but that we looked at three parks where these six signs are going to be installed at. Uh, two are going to be a gardenia, two are tall timbers and two at Water Tower Park. But I, I had a discussion with Mr. Smith and it, it's going to be my recommendation after this passes, that him and Captain Lenevsky go back and survey all the parks in Michigan City to see if they need these kind of signs and get this taken care of throughout the whole city.
Did you want to be added as the?
Uh, yes, I wanted to be added as a co-sponsor.
Is, is there anyone else that would like to be added? Cause I know that they will have to make the changes. Just wanted to double check.
And if I may, Madam President, um, I had an opportunity to speak with Councilman Paul Preswellinsky this afternoon. And he did want me to, gave me consent to elaborate just a tad in regards to the, um, street sweeper that is being requested. He had the opportunity to speak with the sanitation. And he believed that, um, they will probably be able to assist, um, with funding.
Right. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Madam President, City Council. Um, I'm just here if you need any questions, uh, very briefly with the, uh, radar signs. The reason we selected the three parks that Councilman, uh, Don Preswellinsky stated, these was the parks that we had the most complaints with speeding. So to remedy that, these are already, they're basically fifteen mile an hour signs. There's already fifteen mile an hour signs there, but they're just our typical, uh, galvanized square poles. These signs going to indicate to the motorists going through these parks that you're speeding, can you slow down? Well, we actually looking at, we looking at, you know, uh, vehicles brake lights. La Porte has on, we went, I went and toured Valparaiso and I sat there for like a half an hour at each of these. La Porte has on, we went, I went and toured Valparaiso and I sat there for like a half an hour at each of these, um, cities looking at the traffic that was flowing through there. And yes, the vehicles were speeding. Once they appeared, once they approached these signs, they started slowing down. So, that's basically it. If you have any questions.
Any questions from anybody? All right, thank you. Oh.
My quick, but is this a, uh, something that's only for parks?
Uh, they could be used, that part, they could be used anywhere else, but these are primarily, uh, just typical, uh, school zone speed limit signs, radar signs.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And.
Yes.
Yeah, just real, what was the cost on those, those, uh, again?
They're, uh, fourteen thousand for two, because you got to have two going each direction. It's six, so it's a total of, uh, forty-eight thousand for six.
Fourteen thousand.
Right. Any additional, uh, comments or any other questions from the council? All right, any, thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Ms. Nyla, you can add me as well. Pick it, I'll be throwing in your side. Anyway, um, any additional comments from the, the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Dahlia Ziegus. Hold on. Councilwoman Dahlia Ziegus and, uh, second by Councilman Don Prespolinski. Ms. Nyla up on the roll call.
Ms. Ziegus?
Hi.
Mister, Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mister Dabney?
Hi.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
And Mister Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
Ms. Nyla, the second resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the engineer of the general fund one zero zero one for the year twenty twenty-two, Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
I will let, um, our city controller, um, make remarks on, on this particular one. And it's in the amount of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars.
Good evening, Yvonne Hoff, Master City Controller. Um, this is, um, just asking for a transfer from the salaries line item to cover a, the contract that we have with Primera, uh, for, um, engineering services.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Any comments from the council? Yep.
I'll still approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick and second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyla up on the vote.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mister Dabney?
Hi.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
Mister Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
And Ms. Ziegus?
Hi.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
All right, miss, that, both resolutions have passed. Uh, Ms. uh, Nyla, the first ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating section two dash four, ten point four and chapter two of the Michigan City municipal code to create emergency management agency, EMA, donation fund. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
And this is the fund that we already passed, um, uh, appropriation for the EMA. Yes. And this is just to create the fund for that. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any, not any comments from the council? Any comments from the council? This be held over for second reading. Ms. Nyla, first ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending ordinance number four, five, nine, eight, commonly known as the twenty twenty-two salary ordinance to increase the annual salary for the deputy fire chief position. And this is introduced by Mister Dabney and co-sponsored by Ms. Tillman, Mister Simmons, Ms. Deitch and Mister Fitzpatrick.
Any comments from the sponsors? Comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Any comments from the council? With none being, no comments, this be held over for third reading. Ms. Nyla, up second ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending section one oh two dash forty-six in the minute, Michigan City Municipal Code known as Arbor's License to amend the license application and related procedures. And this is introduced by Mister Simmons, Mister Don Prespolinski and Ms. Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsors? Nope. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? That, no comments from the council, this be held over for third reading. The last ordinance, um, by title only, it's on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for highway rail grade crossing improvements to establish quiet zones on the South Shoreline owned and operated by the Northern Indiana commuter transportation district. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mister Dabney, Mister Simmons, Ms. Tillman and Mister Don Prespolinski.
Any comments from the, the council, from the sponsors? Comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public?
Good evening, Ernie Hallahan, three oh two Gladys Street. I, I brought this up last meeting about the South Shore own risky. Well, lo and behold, Monday morning, three thirty in the morning, that thing blaring its, it's horn and mowed my wife up at three thirty. And she had to get up because she couldn't go back to sleep then. I, I, I don't see the sense in that over there on that little section of track, just traveling back and forth, transferring cars into that factory. I mean, they got, they got lights and everything else there for it. I don't understand him why he has to lay on that horn like he does over there. So, if you get that added into this, I'd appreciate it.
You, so, okay, I, I will send a complaint in to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallahan, Mr. Ernie.
Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I believe with these quiet zones, we're going to see an increase in car versus train accidents in Michigan City. Well, I'm a regular South Shore ride passenger. When I go to my events in Chicago, um, this personally affected me twice. I was in a twice last year, when I was, uh, riding the train when, when we had a, a vehicle collision. I liked to just a little public, uh, safety notice. Uh, it really spooked me. Uh, I did a little research on where the safest place to ride in, in, on the train is. You always want to ride and, and, and on the second to the last in the back of the car of the train, if possible. It's if there's a derailment or a vehicle collision, it's the safest place to be. And if there's a, don't ride in the very back car because there's a possibility that the train may get rear-ended by another train. So, I wanted to add, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Um, I was at the Board of Works meeting. I just want to, does this have anything to do with this closure of Holiday Street? Putting guardrails up there or safety rails?
Yeah, you can answer.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I attended, um, a couple of the workshops where the engineer and the city planner, uh, presented the maps of Holiday Street, um, Holiday Street, Carroll and School. Those streets are not going to be closed. There is a section of Holiday Street, um, that will be closed off and become green, um, green space. And what they're going to be implementing, um, on that street is they're going to be putting up a six-inch medium, median and new guardrails. And that's also, then you have your, um, one-way streets. Those are going to have the double guardrails. We're requesting for them to go back to find out if we can have the guardrails, um, on Holiday Street to surpass the median. And the purpose of having these medians implemented is so that it, it's, one is a deterrent so that they can't go around the guardrails. If they try to go around the guardrails, they're going to have to try to get over that median. And unfortunately, that's going to cause some chaos to their vehicles. As far as safety and preventative measures, we can only go so far as far as the guardrail goes because there's, um, there's high, high, um, ordinances or regulations in how long the rails can be so that they're not going into the wires. So, again, that is something that we are requesting that those guardrails do exceed to go almost across the whole street when they come down or they add an extra arm to it, but they have to go back out and do the measurements for those. Um, there was rumor or it was said originally that they were going to actually officially close Holiday Street. They are not. The fourth, the full street and shutting that whole railroad intersection down. They are not closing any of those down. They are making some amendments and with the regulations to be in compliance with the guardrails and with the quiet noise. They'll have the lights, um, um, the train will be aware that as current standards that if there is someone or vehicle that is on the track, then they will blow and they know to blow for their emergency sounds when they see that, uh, when they approach those areas.
Well, one of the reasons why I was asking this question is because one of the things I said at the workshop and the mayor told me to come here and talk to you guys about it was, I mean, at the, um, Board of Works meeting is that as public servants, don't you, should you listen to the public? Has anybody been out to Schofield Court or Dickerson Street and asked the residents, what did they want about Holiday Street? But I took the time out to do that today. Um, out of the ten houses that's in that area, only, only one person wasn't there. Everybody said they didn't want Holiday Street to be shut down. These people vote for you. These people absolutely vote for you and the mayor Bronx put this out there. So, I'm just, I'm just dumbfounded on why nobody's asking the public their opinion. You're public servants.
And if I could?
And I, I just wanted, I just want to say, let me just say this for the record. Schofield, we get, we talking about one twenty-three, no. One twenty-one, no. One nineteen, these are addresses, said no. One oh seven said no. Dickerson, one, one twenty-nine said no. One twenty-one said no. One twenty-two said no. Um, one thirty-six is, um, a gentleman is, um, never there, only there during the weekend, so we couldn't get in touch with him. One forty-two said no and one forty-four said no. We need to start paying attention to the residents and not to ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and they said no to not closing the street down. I just want to clarify that.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, to not closing the street. Thank you, um, Councilman Tillman. Yes, Councilman, uh, Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, uh, I just wanted to reiterate what's actually happening down there and as it was stated earlier, uh, this is not closing down Holiday Street. And I actually took a picture when we were in our meeting to talk about the different crossings that were, were being looked at. School Street Grace, uh, School Street Grace, Woodland Pleasant, and then Carroll Avenue. So, what's happening is the crossings, they're going to be made safe so that they can be quiet zones. You know, so the ones that are able to have the rails come all the way down, that will be done to do that. And the ones that we were talking about that may have these medians in the middle. So, there's going to, the, the rail will come down there, be a median in the middle, then you pull up to it and you cannot take your car and jump over the median to get around the rail. So, those don't require the full gate across. There's a big difference in the, in the cost. We were looking at like three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars or so to get the, the rails that would go all the way across. And about forty-seven thousand dollars to do the ones with the medians there. Um, so you could pull up to the, the gate, but you could not jump over the, the median to get around the, uh, the rails there. So, this has nothing to do with closing of Holiday, uh, Street at all. This is all about making these quiet zones, uh, on the, the tracks there. And as Councilwoman Tillman said, when the, the, the guys are coming down in the trains, if they see something, they still see something that may be dangerous. Just because it's a quiet zone does not mean they cannot hit the, the horn, uh, to alert people that they may be in some type of trouble coming through there. So, it's not about closing Holiday Street, not at all. Um, it's about fixing these rails to, to extend the quiet zone that's going to come up to the boulevard because of the project, the double-tracking project that stopped at the boulevard and now to be able to continue on through the first ward, fifth ward and, and, uh, on down. So, that's the, the, the information that you should know.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Any additional po- comments from the public? All right, comments from, well, before we, um, take comments from the council, I just want to, uh, make sure I state that this was advertised in the Herald Dispatch on June eighth and we held a formal public hearing on June twenty-first. Any comments from the council?
I make a motion to accept.
Yep. So, we have a, a motion on the table from Councilman Tracy Till, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Support.
And a second from Councilman Brian Dabney. Uh, Ms. Nyla up on the vote.
Mister Dabney?
Hi.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
Mister Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
Ms. Ziegus?
Hi.
And Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. We don't have any new business. Is there, um, I know, um, under unfinished business, we have, um, nominations that we've already received a report from Councilwoman, um, Tracy Tillman. Um, now open up for a public comment. Any comments from the public?
This is Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I think we all be remiss if we didn't send our well wishes to the Highland Park Illinois community. Um, this kind of personally affects me because, um, Saturday night after I left my concert, I traveled to Highland Park. I attended the Dwight Yoakam with the Crow Ministry concert venue. I often go there, attend my concerts. Really, we're a fun, fine venue, excellent, really affluent, well-to-do community, predominantly Jewish. Um, I just want to give everybody my best up there. I think the medical staff at North Shore Medical Institute is a presidential better freedom for their services. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Additional comments from the public? Um, I'll open it up for, is there anybody online? All right, thank you. Um, I'll open up to council comments. Yes, Councilman Don Prespolinski?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank all the city department heads and all the city departments for a, uh, fantastic Fourth of July weekend in Michigan City. Uh, I participated in a parade. The parade was great. Had a fantastic time with my wife and my son riding down Franklin Street. And, uh, also I had asked the mayor about the city engineer and where we stood with that. And I requested that he come to the last meeting. I saw him last week and asked him where we stood. Uh, kind of had a sidebar discussion telling me that a certain company was doing it. Don't know if they have a contract to do it. I'm not going to name any names right here. But, uh, you know, I asked them if you could send an email or some type of communication to the council. Didn't get any. I asked them to attend tonight's meeting so he could explain to the council what's going on with the engineering position, what's going on with repairing sidewalks in Michigan City, what's going on with repairing streets for Michigan City. And apparently, uh, he didn't want to discuss it this evening because he didn't, didn't show up. You know, and, and just to let you know, you know, some people don't think that maybe sidewalks are, are a big deal. But that is for people that live in neighborhoods or people that ride bikes or people that walk or senior citizens that maybe have to use a walker or aren't very stable, uh, walking. A good sidewalk is a friend to everyone. Uh, just when I was at the parade the other day, so I, I went from where we were parked over on Pine Street and I walked down Eighth Street to the farmer's market to get a couple bottles of water. And I couldn't believe the shape, condition of the sidewalks that there were just in that one block segment. I mean, you had sidewalks that were, you know, cracked. I mean, you had sidewalks that were, you know, cracked, went down six inches in different spots. And that's our downtown area where the double track is gonna explode everything, and we're gonna have fifty thousand people living within that you know, one mile uh portion of property that we need to look at these things, we need to get them taken care of. Then I go down to Washington Park and do some walking down there, which my son forced me to get out of the house and get some exercise, so I did. But even the sidewalks down there, some of the sidewalks were just in uh horrendous, horrendous shape. Uh, to me, they're important. This is the time of the year when you gotta get that stuff done. Because then if we do have a city engineer comes on board, well, here we are, we're into the middle of July now. You gotta get projects put together. You gotta get ahold of Reese Riley, tell them to come to Michigan City, who knows what their workforce is available. So to me, the city's behind the eight ball in uh, in this whole thing. And you know, if we decide, okay, well, next summer, we're gonna come out, we're gonna be two million dollars worth of streets and sidewalks. You know, it, it doesn't work that way. You gotta do it every summer, you get things done, and uh I'm, I'm disappointed in, in that respect, and you know, at least show the council some respect to come and discuss the item in front of them. From a councilman that's uh requested twice already, but have gotten back no communications whatsoever, not even a phone call about the uh a phone call, an email, a letter, what have you, about the uh whole subject matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Don. Any additional comments from the council? All right, well, I'll just uh reiterate what uh Tommy Kalavich said, you know, these uh mass shootings are happening more and more often, and we're almost becoming um immune to some of it, and again, um, I appreciate your comments because um we were sitting there watching the news today, another person um passed from that event, and um with the laws that have been passed, that Councilman Don brought up um previously, a few, several council meetings back um with the gun laws that have changed here um in Indiana, um you know, who knows what's gonna happen. Um, and it's happening more and more across the nation that um, we have eighteen-year-olds that can just go get a gun and carry um without a permit, right? At, effective July first, so um, just, just watch your surroundings, um, watch each other. Um, just be aware, um, you know, it's hot, it's the summer months. Um, you'll see more people out and about, and a lot more hot heads, and um just need to, you know, just be aware of your surroundings. So with that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.